Hello, everyone. Brad, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I missed you. Let's try to chat after this call if we can for just a minute.
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, I missed you. Let's try to chat after the call if we can.
Sure.
All right, Mr. Chair, it's three o'clock.
Okay. Are we ready? Price, staff ready?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. We will call the number nine, Planet Commission meeting to order. Please allow me to read into the record, and according to Freedom of Information Act, a copy of the agenda was posted on our bulletin board in the county administration office, sent to radio, TV stations, and newspapers, and persons requesting notification in the county. So we certainly appreciate the public joining us here on our Zoom call, commission call today, and we look forward to not only your participation, but the commissioners and their participation as well. So thank all people being here. The first item on our agenda is our consent agenda, and basically what happens with our consent agenda is a, we will look at the cases. If we've had requests for persons to speak either for or against cases, we make a determination whether or not those cases should be placed on or not placed on our consent agenda and from there. And so, Mr. Price, before we make a motion on our consent agenda, have someone do that. Are there any cases where folks have signed up to speak against any of these cases?
Um, so the for under MAP amendments on case number one, which is case twenty dash zero thirty-one, we've had a number of people to sign up for comments. We, for case twenty, item number three, which is case twenty dash zero three-three MA, we also have comments for that request. And those are the only ones that we've had opposition comments submitted regarding those cases. We do have letters from applicants for the other cases, but we do not have any in opposition to the request.
Okay, so the only case then that would be removed from the consent agenda would be case number one. And of course, included in that would be our presentation of minutes and our real names. I get a motion from a commissioner to approve the consent agenda and with those amendments.
I'd be happy to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as offered, approving the minutes, the real names, MAP amendment number four and five. Hearing testimony on one, two, and three.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to properly second that we approve the consent agenda. As stated, all in favor signify by roll call vote.
Okay, Gil Chris?
Aye.
Carnes?
Yes.
Yonkey?
Aye.
Carlisle? Carlisle? Dennis?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Taylor? Branham?
Aye.
Frierson? And motion passes.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move right along then to our first case. Price?
Okay. First case is, first item is case twenty dash zero thirty-one MA. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately forty acres from M1, which is light industrial to RMMD, which is residential multifamily medium density. The parcel is located along Rivkin Boulevard, more specifically is right behind the Walmart off of Two Notch Road. Staff recommends approval of this request. And we based our recommendation on the fact that that the comprehensive plan recommends a desired development pattern of medium density residential neighborhoods, which will provide a mix of residential uses and densities within the neighborhoods, and that the proposed rezoning to RMMD would allow for the recommendations of the comprehensive plan as prescribed.
Okay, Mr. Price, thank you. Are there any questions for the staff? Mr. Price, has the applicant submitted any testimony for this particular case?
Uh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, we do have, we do have comments from the applicant. And again, as stated, we also have comments from the, in opposition to the request.
Okay.
I'll actually, I can, I can read the letter from the applicant, Mr. Fuller, Bobby Fuller.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this application is being pursued by Jim Chapman Communities in order to establish in the Columbia-Richland County market a specialty rental homes community similar to the developer's niche market plan proven successful in Atlanta, Highlands, and similar residential localities. The proposal is not a typical large lot upscale subdivision. This is for rent community development plan appeals to high, excuse me, this for rent community development plan appeals to high level workforce and an active adult seniors demographic that prefer to rent rather than own. In, in each operating locality, this type community constitutes an integral and significant lifestyle choices part of the overall neighborhood area. By the nature of this customer constituency, the for rent community seeks locations in close proximity to established residential communities. This development model is established specifically to provide a desirable residential option. It is not a starter home or transitional market. The for rent community is a permanent destination residential community designed and operated for appeal to a particular constituency. This proposed development is located on approximately forty acres on Rivkin Boulevard between the Wildwood Community and Two Notch Road. It will consist of two hundred to two hundred and fifty single story and one and a half story townhome units, approximately five to six units per acre. The property will be leased and maintained by a professional management company. Townhome buildings will be constructed to include between two to eight attached units per building. The development will be a gated community with a pool, clubhouse, gym, and dog park as amenities. The project will consist of two to three bedroom units with rents ranging from fifteen hundred per month to nineteen hundred plus per month. Each dwelling unit is an individual rental residence, not a condominium or shared ownership unit. This community will be unique to the northeast Columbia market. We urge your recommendation of approval for this application to enable a compatible alternative style beneficial accommodation to an already prominent viable and vibrant residential area of Richland County. Robert F. Fuller, attorney for applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Price. So are there any comments for the staff regarding Mr. Fuller's information to the commissioner? Okay. Mr. Price, you indicated there are folk signed up to speak.
Yes, sir. I think with discussions with staff, we have probably close to seventy comments against the request. Staff has had an opportunity to review the comments that were submitted, and while a lot of them share the same sentiment, you know, again, we did receive close to seventy, and staff will read each one into the record until the will of the Planet Commission is that you've heard enough that you can then make your determination.
Price, thank you for that information and sending over the information to the commission so that we would also have an opportunity to review the information as well. So that as we go through this, we can not only get a feel for what the community is saying, but to your point, we want to make sure that we hear the case in its totality so that if there are comments that are consistent, feel free to make sure that we get a good sense of what the community is saying holistically and that that's why we won't have to worry about too much redundancy. Mr. Price?
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Crooks?
With that being said, we could move forward and then we'll, we'll get a sense of where we are and then make a determination at that time.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Gil Chris, commission members, start, ready for me to start?
Yes, sir. Right ahead.
All right, from Gil Bragg, President Wildwood HOA, three oh one Duck Road, Columbia, South Carolina, two nine two two three, to the Richland County Planning Commission. The Richland County Planning Commission is considering a request to change the existing zoning on a very large parcel of land that backs up to our Wildwood neighborhood along the area behind the intersection of Leaning Tree Road and Old Still Road and is located immediately behind the Walmart Supercenter. The proposed change is to take the zoning from M1 to RMMD. It is case number twenty dash zero three one MA. See attached maps of property adjacent to Wildwood. Our HOA board and residents are concerned that any large multifamily housing development that backs up to our neighborhood could be detrimental to our property values, result in increased crime, and will result in more and more pressure on our schools, our roads, and community infrastructure in our neighborhood. It appears the access in and out of this property would be via Rivkin Boulevard onto Two Notch Road. We are adamantly opposed to having any access given to our neighborhood for vehicles or foot traffic. A review of the properties surrounding the Wildwood community and the crime map shows we are surrounded by retail corridors and/or large multifamily properties, apartment complexes, et cetera, where crime is prevalent. Virtually all of our public neighborhood roads are in horrible condition, even though we have withstood many tax increases, and we have been told by Richland County officials that none of the money from the penny tax increase can be used to improve our roads inside our neighborhood. Our infrastructures are crumbling, yet Richland County continues to approve large density residential zoning changes without addressing solutions for currently existing neighborhoods. Our HOA board is against this rezoning change to allow a large density of residential homes. Gil Bragg, President Wildwood HOA. And I believe you have the attached map and photo that is referenced in that previous comment.
That is correct, yes.
All right, next comment, Ron and Evelyn Hobson, eighty-nine Running Fox, Running Fox Road, Columbia, South Carolina, two nine two two three, to the Richland County Planning Commission. We are running to express our strong opposition to the proposed change to the zoning from M1 to RMMD, case number twenty dash zero three one MA. The proposed rezoning will be detrimental not only to our neighborhood, but also to the area. As you can imagine, nearly all of the residents in the Wildwood neighborhoods are completely opposed to rezoning to increase RMMD multifamily housing that will cause traffic and safety problems, increase the neighborhood crime concerns, destroy local wildlife habitats, have a high potential of lowering the existing home property values, and lastly, a complete invasion of privacy to the adjacent taxpaying homeowners' properties. Below is a brief overview as to our valid concerns. Traffic and safety are major areas of concern. Traffic jams in the northeast area of Columbia, specifically Two Notch Road, already spans the distance between Park Lane Road to Clemson Road for much of the day, and the intersections are routinely blocked by traffic during rush hours with the length of rush hours increasing. A traffic surge during morning and afternoon rush hours will also negatively impact safety for our children since students are traveling to and from school during these times. In general, the area traffic is continuing to increase, and heavy traffic is already common, which may not have been intensified during the council's past rezoning approvals. We concur that crime prevention is not a one size fits all effort. However, with experiencing an ever increasing crime rate as a community, it goes without saying the proposed rezoning will dramatically affect the crime concerns of all Wildwood homeowners. For a neighborhood that is already experiencing car break-ins, thefts, and vandalism, we ask that you not approve the rezoning as it directly affects the safety within our neighborhood. Wildlife has been observed in the area, and any development will destroy their habitat. Any planned development of the property should consider the continuing impact of local wildlife habitat, and a species study should be conducted by the appropriate agency prior to any rezoning consideration. Property values are likely to go down in the area if you approve rezoning to allow multifamily apartments or condominium construction. It is understandable Richland County would be interested in the increased tax revenue. However, as a new homeowner to the neighborhood, we ask, are you willing to jeopardize the property values of over one thousand Wildwood homes? Lowering the property values of existing homes results in substantial reduction in taxes being collected by the Richland County. Another important fact to consider prior to committing to new roads with any new rezoning is to address the common road infrastructure within our neighborhood as well as others. We urge you to give real consideration to the across the board impact the rezoning will have on the area and disprove the proposed rezoning. From recent discussions with my neighbors, I know our opinions are shared by many. We ask that you give our homes and our neighborhood the same consideration you would if your home backed up the proposed rezoning property. In fact, we invite you to schedule a time to meet with us to look at the properties that would be directly affected by this rezoning. We are more than happy to meet with you at your convenience. Thank you for your continued service and support of our community. Best regards, Ron and Evelyn Hobson. Next comment, no address from Heather Alexander. Hi, I live in Wildwood, and I'm adamantly opposed to the rezoning of this land to multifamily slash high density. This would be a significant impact on the neighborhood and the area overall. There are plenty of apartments already within one to two miles. Multifamily housing adds many cars to Two Notch Road, Polo Road, and Sparkleberry. These roads are already congested. Mallet Hill has become a thoroughfare even though it's a neighborhood road. I watched a large speeding tow truck pass a car yesterday on Mallet Hill, which is a, which is all a no passing zone. This is a common occurrence. The other trucks are already, the other roads, excuse me, the other roads are already severely congested, and speeding and running red lights are normal. It's highly unfair to the residents in Wildwood who purchase homes to be away from high density and crowded areas. This is a huge blow to the serenity of the neighborhood and will only lower, will only lower values. I would ask that you not allow rezoning. Thank you, Heather Alexander. Next comment, three twenty-six Leaning Tree Road, Maxie and Karen Joy to the Richland County Planning Commission. My wife and I oppose the rezoning of land that runs behind Walmart and homes on Leaning Tree Road from light industrial to residential medium density. Our home at three two six Leaning Tree Road is at ground zero for the impact of the rezoning. In addition to opposing the rezoning from M1 to RMMD, we feel that granting any access to our neighborhood for vehicle or pedestrian traffic will have a negative impact on our quality of life and our neighbors. Please enter this email into the record for Monday, November ninth meeting. Colonel, U.S. Army Retired Maxie and Karen Joy. Next comment. One seventeen Silver Lake Road, Kathleen Lenty. Dear sirs, this letter is to express my strong opposition to the zoning change, case twenty dash zero three one currently proposed for the area behind Walmart on Two Notch Road budding up to the Wildwood neighborhood. The northeast area is currently awash with vacant apartments. There are over a dozen apartment complexes within five miles of this proposed zone. For example, Sand Hills is full of vacancies as are the apartments near the Wildwood area. Adding even more residential homes and apartments on this land would put additional pressure on the infrastructure, traffic, roads, schools that is already insufficient for the current residents in the northeast. The road widening project currently under construction on Clemson Road still will not be sufficient in addressing the traffic issues for the residents in the northeast. That project was launched with residential numbers from five years ago. Again, I respectfully request that you deny this proposed zoning change. The current residents of the northeast do not deserve additional pressure on our schools or more gridlock on our roads. Thank you, Kathleen Lenty. Next comment, I do not see an address from Polly Andrews. Dear Richland County Planning Commission, we are very much opposed to the proposed building. The safety of our family, friends, and neighbors are important. The pressure on infrastructure and the increased crime that may result from a large density of new apartments slash homes our neighborhood is zoned low density will not help our property values or safety. Thank you for your time and attention to help us make our voices heard. Internally, Polly Andrews. Next comment, Gretchen Scholl, I think is how you say that. Five Charlie Horse Road, dear planning commission. I am writing about case number twenty dash zero three one MA regarding rezoning some of the land that runs behind Walmart along homes on Leaning Tree Road. I am opposed to the rezoning as I do not want increased population in our area. Speeding cars, the number of cars, crime generally, and people wandering our streets who do not live here have all increased in the last two to three years due to other similar developments surrounding our neighborhood. Every single day, all four members of my family walk, bike, and run along Old Still Road and Leaning Tree. If this new residential construction goes forward, I am afraid I will have to prohibit my children from independently exercising along these roads. I am also very concerned about the ever increasing crime in our neighborhood. More than once in the last three years, I have seen through our home camera system strangers in my yard and on my front porch just examining the property. When we first moved here in 2014, this never happened. This is very disconcerting and frightening. Please do not move forward with this zoning proposal until you have heard from the people who live near the area and directly experience up, up close every day. Next comment, Mr. Price, will you make sure that I, in within two minutes, this one's a fairly lengthy comment from Ramon M. Mejia, one two one Sparkle Barrel Crossing Road. What can I say a day before the meeting to encourage responsibility and community decision making concerning project development? Logic says nothing. You people will not listen to low grade communications. Written protests from highly educated people are barely even Jesus Christ speaking in your dreams. You probably are not believers anyway, except in the business of taking money from the low hanging fruit trees, which is the belief system if you act on it. The continued destruction of communities by abandoning principles, foundations, tax-based systems, et cetera, does not deter irresponsible development ninety to ninety-nine percent of the time. Why would you buy any, or, excuse me, why would you be any different? I was at the meeting four years ago when the first attempt to hide the truth and push a decision to connect Two Notch Road to the recreational center on Polo Road were passed in front of the public. Fortunately, I knew then what I know now. Some people in decision-making roles in Richland County are being baited with money motives to try and change the landscape of our community. While the community has undoubtedly changed in the last thirty years I've been in northeast Columbia, the change being peddled concerning the space between two notch big business centers and a vital tax base is better defined as destruction. We call it change sometimes because it takes long-term point of view and knowledge to understand destruction versus change. So you sell change like it's snake oil, and destruction is mostly understood as tearing something down in a day or two, not a decade or two. This is a case of destruction, not change, and certainly not responsible development. Hence, the stakeholder speaking out passionately. The only measure we can provide to sway your preemptive opinion is producing short-term alternative values in place of the money being dangled like a carrot for a rabbit to chase. So what can we offer you people that is better than money in assuming your conscious and consciousness of prosperous future like the last thirty years of change and responsible development has afforded is not on the table? Clearly, I would not be addressing this group of vengeful individuals if your conscious and consciousness of the future was already understood. So I'm not out on my limb with the assumptions. Hence, the diatribe hitting home, God, I hope so anyways, because the diatribe is all we are given with a day's notice and the full intentions of using underhanded community planning and passing it off as a fair ballgame has been the status quo for some time. This is also a very effective way to dismiss the collective consciousness of the stakeholders in a geographical area under pressure. Even our little league ballers at Polo Road Rex Center know the difference between underhanded games and fair ball. Pressure will not provide.
Ryan, that was two minutes.
Okay. Next comment, Marta Trimalata, sixty-eight Running Fox Road. Dear sirs, this letter is to express my strong opposition to the zoning change, case twenty dash zero three one currently proposed for the area behind Walmart on Two Notch Road budding up to the Wildwood neighborhood. The northeast area is currently awash with vacant apartments. There are over a dozen apartment complexes within five miles of this proposed zone. For example, Sand Hills is full of vacancies as are the apartments in the Wildwood area. Adding even more residential homes and apartments on this land would put additional pressure on the infrastructure that is already insufficient for the current residents in the northeast. The road widening project currently under construction on Clemson Road will still not be sufficient in addressing the traffic issues for the residents in the northeast. The project was launched with residential numbers from five years ago. Again, I respectfully request that you deny this proposed zoning change. The current residents of the northeast do not deserve additional pressure on our schools or more gridlock on our roads. Thank you, Marta Trimalata. That appears to also be a same comment as previously. Next comment from no address, Amadeo and Amy Zefarino. Our neighborhood is currently zoned low density. The approval of case number twenty dash zero three one A, MA will result in more and more pressure on our schools, our roads, and community infrastructure in our neighborhood. Since Monday, November ninth meeting is not interactive for the public. We are sending you this email to express our disapproval of the zoning change case. And please enter the record count if there is one. By the way, are you going to publish the count for approval versus disapproval? Your decision based on our voice is greatly appreciated. Thank you, and best regards, Amadeo and Amy Zefarino. The next comment, Eddie, Eddie Trimalata, sixty-eight Running Fox Road is the same comment as the one before from Marta Trimalata. Mr. Chair, would you like me to read that one in the record? It expresses verbatim the same comment.
If it's the verbatim, if it's verbatim the same thing, we can, we can move forward to the next one.
Okay, next comment, no address listed, Jan Sol. My husband and I have lived on Charlie Horse Road in the Wildwood subdivision for thirty-three years, are adamantly opposed to the rezoning of the land that runs behind Walmart and the homes on Leaning Tree from light industrial to residential meeting density. Our neighbors are all opposed as well. Please hear our voices and do not let this go forward. Our deepest thanks, Jan Sol. Next comment, Angelo Trimalata, sixty-eight Running Fox Road. Again, same comment as before, voicing disapproval. Next comment, Miriam Scarry Trimalata, sixty-eight Running Fox Road, also expressing the same concerns and disapproval for the request. Next comment from Betty Parker, no address listed. Hello, as a resident of Wildwood, I would like to express my concern over the zoning of the Leaning Tree and Old Still Road area. I am vehemently opposed to creating any kind of zones that would allow building even more multi-unit housing. As you are all well aware, I'm sure there are increased issues with adding more pressure on an area that does not have the infrastructure to accommodate this kind of growth. on an area that does not have the infrastructure to accommodate this kind of growth. You would be adding a burden to residents of Wildwood by allowing these plans to move forward. I hope you will agree to hear the residents' feedback and to take it seriously. We are not in favor of this move. Regards, Betty Parker. Next comment.
If I may. I want to pause just for a second, give you a break, but also ask the commissioners, you know, they feel thus far about the testimony that they've heard from our residents in the county. Obviously, there is some concern that the folk in the area are not too supportive of this map amendment, but we want to just give the commissioners opportunity to decide whether or not they've heard enough information to begin to make an informed decision, or if we should continue to hear some additional testimony. So any commissioners want to weigh in on that?
Certainly, I would say that materially speaking, the comments were, you know, expressed the same sense of issues, traffic, infrastructure, concern about density, property value, crime. I mean, I think that's a consistent theme throughout. But I would personally suggest that I think we have a good sense of public opinion in the area.
Okay. Any additional comments from the commissioners on that? If not, Mr. Crooks, Mr. Price, I would certainly like to turn this back over to the commission and let us ask you a few questions about this, if we may.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Price, I heard a couple of references to the school traffic. Were you, did you guys reach out to the school district and did they in any way comment on this particular proposed map amendment?
Yes, sir. As part of the notification process, we do send all of our agendas out to the school district. And for District 2, we sent the agenda out to the planning director for School District 2. We also had a conversation just to make sure that he did receive this. But as of this time, we have not received any comments either for or against the project from School District 2, but they are aware of the project.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any additional comments from the commissioners regarding this case? No comments from commissioners? If not, Chair will certainly entertain a motion on this particular case. Case number 20-031 MA. Whether or not we want to send this forward to council with recommendation of approval based on staff's recommendation, or if we want to send this forward to council with recommendation of denial. I'll accept the motion if there are no additional comments.
I'm about seeming to sort of spaz out. I mean, I will comment on this one. I think that looking at the location, in some ways, this is kind of like the perfect place for this type of development. It's got access out to a major arterial on a road that already has a traffic signal. It does back up to a single-family residential neighborhood, but it does not appear to have any access through that neighborhood. I do think that this type of project in this type of area is something that is consistent with our overall plan and something that we should send forward to council with a recommendation of approval. So I'll make that a motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Carnes. Is there a second on that motion?
A second.
Okay. It's been moving apart for the second then that we sent case number 20-031 MA forward to council with a recommendation of approval. Any further discussion? If not, we will vote by roll call vote.
Okay. Gil, Chris?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Yonky?
No.
Carlisle?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Branham?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes 6 to 1.
Okay, again, we are a recommending body to County Council, and they will meet on November 19th. I'm assuming they're still doing Zoom, is that right, Price?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they'll meet on the 19th with their Zoom call, and the public is, can feel free to weigh in at that time.
Yes, sir. And also, the comments that were submitted to the Planning Commission, we did not receive any new ones from the residents that opposed this particular request. We will forward those same comments on to the County Council for the zoning public hearing meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Chair, can I ask a question?
Sure, Mr. Brown.
Thanks. These folks that want to stay engaged in the process going forward, who should they reach out? Is there anyone they should reach out to specifically on County Council, being that, you know, Mr. Jackson, who was the councilman for this area, has passed away?
Yeah, so I believe, I believe at this time, the chair of the council is receiving comments, but they can feel free to contact any of the council members. So they can contact Councilman Livingston, who is the chair of County Council at this time. Or you can also reach out to any of the other council members to express your, either your concerns or support, opposition to the request.
All right, thank you.
I have one quick question for Mr. Price. I could not hear Taylor or Fryerson, and I don't see them on my listing.
No, they are not on. I just made a call just in case they happen to come, but they were not on.
Okay, so I'm not crazy, thank you. At least not for that reason.
Any additional comments?
I got one. We just need to make sure that the people out there understand. Hold on. The family must be home, so the dog went crazy. But we just need to make sure everybody out there understands that we are a recommending body, as Mr. Gilchrist said, and we have strict rules that we have to follow. And if you guys out there that oppose this, make sure you reach out to County Council, because they're the ones that vote on that. We are just a recommending body based off our putting pieces together.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Any additional comments?
I mean, I understand what Mr. Dennis is saying, but also just think it's important for the public to understand that we are a county that's growing. We have population growth, and that land gets developed. It's not that there's malfeasance or any ill intent, but, you know, we do look at these things, and we take them within. I mean, I look at these issues and this greater global concept of the county. The fact that we are in a process of growth, and, you know, where should it go and how should it go? And it should be diversified. It should include multifamily and single-family. It should include large lot and small lot. And when a parcel comes up, granted, it butts up against single-family, but, you know, different land uses that back up to each other are often much more compatible than, and sometimes other times when they face each other. So, I mean, I, you know, we are a recommending body, but I think that we do make our decisions based on a lot of factors.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Carr, for that comment. You know, one of the things that I would remind this commission, that the purpose of why we undertook a significant code rewrite was just that point that Carnes raised, to ensure that not only are we a recommending body, but we do have a responsibility to the taxpayers in this county to ensure that we're doing development or proposing that we do development the right way in planning. And so the opportunity to be able to not just approve these rezonings in a vacuum is very important. And I appreciate what this commission does in terms of its homework to ensure that when we cast a vote, that we're doing it so by ensuring that we are doing what's in the best interest of the county. So Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Carnes, thank you all for those comments, for sure. Any additional comments?
Actually, I will have one more.
Yeah.
And again, it's just, I like to hear from the commission members what's their thinking. So, I mean, if anybody is, you know, opposed, you know, to please offer why. I mean, I've been guilty of the same. There's times I vote opposite in a motion without ever making a comment. So I understand there's times it just is what it is, but I think it would be really great if, as council members or commission members, sorry, that, you know, if you have an opposition to something, please speak up, I want to hear it.
Okay, this is Chris. I'll explain my vote. I voted no. I, I'm a map guy by my profession, and I've just been scrolling around this area, and it's so packed already. There's a new development you could see on Google Maps just up, what, north of Old Still Road? That has a similar type of multifamily there. There's opportunities for renters in this area, and we've all driven up and down Two Notch Road, and we know how dense it is. And I'm looking at behind Walmart and how they would be coming in and off of that major route. It just doesn't seem that smart to me. So that's why I voted in that direction. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Yonky. Any additional comments?
I will say this. I actually live in the area, and I understand the concerns of the citizens. And, well, does everybody want to call me when I'm trying to make a comment? So I understand the citizens' pushback on this. However, as Ms. Carnes said, we are a growing community. This does fit our plan perfect. As somebody that lives here, wholeheartedly, I understand where they're coming from, but when you look at it from growth of the community, how we are putting the pieces together, this actually fits perfectly. And I drive that area every day because I live less than a mile and a half from it.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Any additional comments? I was about to ask for a motion for a vote, but we've already voted on it. So we can certainly move on to the next case, Mr. Price.
Yes, sir. All right, the next item is case 20-032 MA. The applicant is Ryan Maltba. The location is 4551 Hardscrabble Road. The applicant is requesting to rezon a little less than an acre of land from Ru, which is RU, to General Commercial, which is GC. Staff recommends disapproval of this request. And our request is really, is kind of more, kind of principally for disapproval. According to the comprehensive plan, the subject site is not located along a main road corridor or within a distance of a primary arterial. And that is one of the recommendations for projects along this corridor according to the comprehensive plan. However, the request to rezon would be compatible with adjacent land uses and the current development patterns for commercial development. And also, the current district has become out of place with this type and intensity of development surrounding it as the character of the area is more consistent with that that of the proposed request in the Ru district. And so again, staff recommends disapproval for this request, but only principally according to the comp plan.
Are there any questions for the staff?
I have one quick question. I would have thought Hardscrabble was a major arterial.
No, ma'am. And actually, this has come up before, some other requests, but this time it is not according to the comp plan.
So we, in our comp plan, establish what are major arterials? It's not based on any objective, it's just that sort of subjective?
Okay, could you repeat that?
I'm just, I mean, so you're saying that the determination of what is or is not a major arterial is based on the comp plan, which I would offer is subjective.
I did not mean, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that. No, that's not based on the comp plan. The recommendations for where certain uses in the guidelines for development are in the comp plan, but however, the determination of the Ru classification is not in the comp plan. That's based on DOT standards and requirement.
Well, okay. I mean, I can, I will not end this in a motion because I'm curious if anybody else has any discussion, but I feel that supporting this being rezoned to GC is only natural. I mean, I am not about spreading commercial up and down roads willy-nilly, but certainly the commercial on that section of Hardscrabble is pretty well established. And to say this property needs to stay residential is, just feels wholly inconsistent with what exists out there and not fair or not proper.
Carnes, I 100% support your comments on that. Are there any additional comments regarding this particular proposal? You know, every time I see this, particularly with all of the improvements that are going on with Hardscrabble Road, and I'm surprised I had a conversation about this earlier, this idea, and I want to talk about this in my chairman's report, but some of the improvements that we do have going on around the county, and for some of these roads to continue to still be designated as Ru is just absolutely something that we, we've got to take a more proactive approach to try to address this because it is causing us to be in conflict with the very thing that we said just a few moments ago in the first case, that we're trying to be judicious about how we plan adequately and recommend appropriately to the council about what it is that they should be doing. And this type of, hey, here, it's just another example of why I strongly support and appreciate the commission moving forward with the rewrite. But again, Commissioner Carnes, I certainly would support your comments on this particular case. Are there any additional comments on this case? Mr. Price, do we have anybody standing up to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Planning Commission members, thank you for your service to the community and your time today. As both the applicant for the 4551 Hardscrabble Road map amendment and owner of the adjacent retail center, I would appreciate your support rezoning from Ru to General Commercial. Two concerns pertinent to the amendment request are the classification of Hardscrabble Road as it exists today and the impact on the surrounding character of the area. The South Carolina Department of Transportation's plan to widen and upgrade Hardscrabble appears to be underway with land disturbance aprons already placed along the right-of-way. In an effort to mitigate any concerns, I have preliminary feedback from DOT, and with their recommendation, intend on sharing access to 4551 with the adjacent center. Thus, the DOT is aware and no new points of access to Hardscrabble will be made. The map amendment will not create new traffic as the traffic is already present. The character of Hardscrabble has changed lockstep with residential growth of the northeast pushing well beyond its boundaries from a decade ago. Commercial development has followed the rooftops to provide necessary services, goods, and food. A non-exhaustive list of existing businesses within the point three, within three tenths of a mile in either direction are Frank's Discount Tire, Sonic, Sparkle Car Wash, Napa, O'Reilly's, Pope Davis Tire, Walgreens, San Jose Restaurant, Marcos Pizza, Spinks Gas, Bank of America, Publix, and Doctor's Care. Almost directly across from 4551 is a new Murphy's Gas, which opened in 2020. Immediately across from 4551, there are 19 acres of property zone, General Commercial. It is my opinion and hope for your support that the character of Hardscrabble Road will not change with a map amendment of .88 acres. Thank you, Ryan Maltba.
Okay.
And that's the only comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right. So that's the applicant. So that's the applicant, uh, comments. Um, any additional comments for the staff regarding the, uh, applicant statement?
I have one. Um, so the applicant is actually the one that owns the, um, complex directly north of it, the B. Phil Brady's Marcos Pizza. And I want to say Japanese takeout restaurant that's in there if I'm not mistaken. Um, is that correct?
Uh, I believe that's what the applicant has stated, um, and we can confirm that.
Mr. Price, the chair's Baker and Baker Real Estate Developers LLC.
Yes, thank you. So there may be, uh, and of course, our records may not reflect any, uh, recent deals, um, of acquisitions though. But according to the applicant, he states that he owns both parcels.
Okay.
Well, that's critical to the propriety of the application, right? Due to the size of the subject parcel?
No, no, sir.
No?
No, sir. I mean, if, if even if he didn't own this parcel, um, could this site be developed? It just really just depends on what the intended uses, um, the use would be on the property.
Okay.
Um, and meeting development standards and if DOT would be willing to grant them a excess, um, from Hardscrabble Road to this site or if they would require some type of connectivity through an adjacent commercial property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Any additional comments? Chair, when they're paying a motion, if they're not?
I'll be, I'll be happy to make a motion that we send case number two oh oh three two forty-five fifty-one Hardscrabble Road or do a council with recommendation. And the reason for going against staff is that given the lot's size and its location being immediately adjacent to large commercial on a road that has become that character, that it is, um, appropriate in this situation to go against the comp plan.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded that we send case number twenty dash zero three two MA four two. Counsel's recommendation of approval based upon the recommendation from Commissioner Card. Uh, moved and properly seconded. Additional discussion? If not, Chair will intangly roll call vote.
Okay. Gil, Chris.
Hi.
Carnes.
Yes.
Yonkey.
I.
Carlisle.
I.
Dennis.
I.
Grady.
I.
Taylor. Branham.
I.
And Fryerson. That passes on seven oh.
Okay.
Zero, excuse me.
I thought I heard opposition there. Did I, did I not hear that Taylor opposed that?
No, uh, he, no, sir. I, I called out their names just in case, um, they, it happened to show, but, um, no, sir.
Okay. Uh, again, we are a recommending body, the county council, and they will meet, uh, on the nineteenth to consider this case. So, um, thank those who were anticipating and thank you, Commissioner. Um. Lou, Ryan Long, next case.
All right, the next item is case twenty dash zero three three MA. The, and the applicant is Yanni Moratev. I hope I'm saying it close. Location is one fifteen Tim's Road. The parcel's a little less than seventy acres. Um, and applicant is requesting rezone from RR, which is rural residential to heavy industrial, which is HI. Uh, staff recommends disapproval of this request. Um, as it wouldn't be consistent with the objectives of the comprehensive plan. As the comprehend, excuse me, as the comprehensive plan designates this area as neighborhood low density and provides that industrial development with significant community impacts, you know, meaning noise, exhaust, odor, heavy truck traffic is discouraged in these areas. And, and being that the HI district allows for uses that promote those impacts, um, staff does recommend disapproval. However, the request to rezone would be compatible with the, the adjacent land uses and current development pattern for industrial development uses in the surrounding area. So again, staff recommends disapproval, um, but it's more of a principally, um, based on the cop plan. However, upon looking at the character of the surrounding area, um, for the request, it would be, uh, compatible.
Okay, any questions for the staff?
Well, I actually do have a question for staff. So it seems that in part of the applicant's um, letter to us, I felt like he was offering that there was some unique features of this prop, piece of property with respect to its ability to support the intended use, which I think was to continue quarry or to do quarrying?
Yes.
And so my question is, is there something environmentally special about this parcel that makes it more compatible for that use than maybe other parts of the county? I think I asked that right.
Yes, a, a, um, Commissioner Cars, I really wish I had a, a better answer for you than what I'm giving because this question has come up, um, actually on a number of occasions for rezonings that have taken place in this general location. Um, so kind of in a summary, they typically mine where it is. Um, and that there really aren't other places in the county. Um, at least wherever you see your mining operations, that is where the, the resources and minerals are that they're, they're looking for. And that this area, not too far from the Broad River, um, has been shown to have the, the required minerals that they're looking for. As I said, this question has come up a good bit and I probably could do a little more research and find it, um, some of the answers that were given previously.
And we do in our comp plan have buffering requirements for heavy industrial versus other differently zoned properties, correct?
Well, in our land development code, we have buffering requirements.
Thank you. Obviously I said the wrong word. I apologize.
Yes.
So. Okay. I'm just curious to hear anybody else's comments.
This. Mr. Chair, uh, request. Could the staff pull up, um, just as a preemptive request, could the staff pull up the, uh, mapping so that we could see uh, the location of one, two, four Tim's Road? Being that that's the location, uh, owned by someone who wrote in a written opposition to the request?
Yes, sir. I believe it is on, on the screen, Mr. Branham. Um, you see the little blue dot in the middle of the screen and we can zoom in if we need to, but that is one, two, four, um, Tim's Road.
Okay. And the, the subject parcel is there in relation? Could you turn on the zoning layer? It helps. I'm looking at it too.
This is, this is why I love having two monitors because I can make it big.
And so he said that, the, the, the person, Mr. William Vincent, said he drives through the subject property to get to his property?
Yes.
What would that road route look like on the map?
Well, you can see Tim's Road, um, I think Tommy, you know, Mr. Leage, actually where his mouse is. You can see Tim's Road and looks like there's more of an easement that leads through to the, um, Mr. Vincent's property.
Interesting. Okay.
To me, it just looks like this is, there's a whole number of just landlocked parcels that don't have any frontage on a public road in this area.
Correct.
Including this parcel doesn't have frontage, Mr., um, the fellow behind, Mr. Um, Vincent's, Vincent?
Yes.
Get a number that don't have frontage. I mean, we just encountered that all over the place.
All right, thanks.
Like Brad. Ms. Cars, did they, uh, adequately answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Correct. I'm surprised that we have, uh, folks sign up to speak?
Yes, we have actually a comment from the applicant, um, and we have three comments of opposition.
Okay.
For this, um, I will read the comment from the applicant. I believe, and again, I, I hate to butcher names and also I apologize. Um, Yanni G. Moratev, property owner is Vulcan Materials Company, one fifteen Tim's Road. Dear Commission Members, Vulcan Materials seeks rezoning of the subject property from rural residential to heavy industrial for future phase use of the existing neighboring Dr, Dreyfus Quarry. Rezoning the subject property will not contribute, contribute to a detrimental, significant community impact through increased activity, but will provide necessary support for the local economy. The subject property aligns with the character of the surrounding development pattern for a parcel location that would otherwise find strain interest and viability for a single family neighborhood development or neighborhood commercial establishments. The Dreyfus Quarry makes a necessary product for a growing economy and supplies crushed stone aggregate that is used in all types of construction, including schools, homes, hospitals, laboratories, commercial construction, places of worship, and of course, roads and bridges. The materials currently shipped to construction sites throughout the metropolitan Columbia area into sales yards in South Carolina's Low Country, where there is not an available supply of quality granite materials for construction. Traffic is unlikely to increase as approval of this application will not increase the market demand for this product. More, moreover, no new quarry locations are likely in Riston County. And because Riston County will soon see the closing of the Olympia Mills Quarry, it is imperative to protect those few resources that Riston County has available to it. Vulcan plans to utilize significantly greater buffer areas than those mandated by DEHAC. And Vulcan constantly monitors all of its, all its activities to ensure compliance with regulatory limits. All future plans will be subject to DEHAC approval with public participation. And all impacts to the surrounding area will be considered and approximately addressed by Vulcan. More, moreover, future reclamation of the site could include reservoirs, subdivisions, campuses or recreational uses as dictated by the surrounding land uses at the time of reclamation. The Dreyfus Quarry is ideally located in the area that is already considered a mostly heavy industrial area. Its location next to the Riston County landfill has saved the county literally millions of dollars over the years by providing dirt cover. They could be directly moved to the landfill site, often using Vulcan's equipment. Vulcan has proven to be a good neighbor at its location at the drive, at the Dreyfus, opened in nineteen fifties and Columbia, opened in eighteen seventies. Quarries and, um, excuse me, quarries contributed to the economic tax base as well as provided quality jobs. Vulcan looks forward to continuing the relationship with Riston County that it has built over the last one hundred and fifty years for decades into the future. Thanks for your favorable consideration of this application. Yours truly, Jimmy Fleming, Vice President of Permitting and External Affairs, Vulcan Materials Company.
Okay. Uh, any questions for the applicant?
Could I ask a question?
Sure, right.
Mr. Price, do you know that to be true, the statement that, uh, this company saved the county millions of dollars by providing dirt cover at the, uh, adjacent landfill?
No, sir. I'm Monday, uh, unable to, um, address that at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any additional comments from staff? Price will listen to the other comments from the public.
All right, so I have a comment from Cheryl Davis-Porell. Uh, in reference to case number twenty dash oh three three MA, I disapprove because of the dust and the noise that would be generated. All right, and then I have one from Mr. Timothy Vincent says, Dear Mr. Gilchrist and fellow commission members, I am writing to voice my concern of the request for changing the zoning of the Vulcan property located at one, one, five Tim's Road from a RR to the heavy industrial. Uh, this area has been pounded by rock and trash trucks for a long time now. It seems the noise keeps getting closer to the residents who live in the surrounding area. Uh, please support your staff's disapproval recommendation to help slow the growth of this type of activity. We want to give our kids a chance to enjoy a peaceful life as they begin to live and raise their, their on families in the future within the surrounding areas. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. And then I have one from William P. Vincent Jr. Says, please accept this email on behalf of my brother Pat Vincent. Thank you. Dear Mr. Gilchrist and other commission members, my name is Pat Vincent. I live at seventy-three twenty-three Montessori Road, but own land at one, two, four Tim's Road next to one, fifteen Tim's Road. I agree with the staff recommendation to disapprove the request for the zone change. At a meeting held at the Cedar Creek Landowners Association when Vulcan was buying the land, uh, from Richland County as well as the adjacent or parcel adjacent to mine, the question was asked what they're going to do with the lands they were buying. Mr. Elliot Oatsese, and I apologize if I butchered the name, VP and GM for Vulcan repeatedly said they wanted these lands for a buffer zone. He didn't know that someone in his group had called the office in Atlanta and they told, and was told they were going to use it for overstock and junk equipment storage. I hate to drive through this property to get to mine and I don't think that it will be pretty. Or I'm sorry, I have to drive through this property to get to mine and I don't think it will be pretty knowing how their other site looks. Also wonder why they need HI zoning when their main operation in this area currently has a RU zoning for the property. I respectfully ask that you would hold up your staff's recommendation of denial. Respectfully, William P. Vincent Jr.
And this is it, but, and those are the, um, three comments, uh, in opposition to the request.
Okay. All right, um. Are there any additional comments from the commission motions?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Well.
Really, uh, something to be said for the, uh, planning department's comment that the rezone would be compatible with adjacent land uses and current development pattern. In, in response to the, the opposition letter and the intended use, you know, the letter of the applicant seems like they make it pretty clear when they say it will be several years before there is mining activity on the subject property. They're, they intend to mine, uh, that property. But, um, agreed, when you review the current zoning map, um, it's harmonious with the surrounding tracts of land if you were to, uh, rezonate to HI. Um, certainly the provision of crushed stone for all the various types of construction projects that require that in a metropolitan area. There's, there's a great need and justification for that, generally speaking. I'm not an industry expert, but, um, There's, there's a great need and justification for that, generally speaking. I'm not an industry expert, but, um, there's already a site, there's already a quarry, this would be an expansion of that quarry. It sounds like potentially just for the opportunity to be able to move once they've completed mining the, uh, tract they're mining right now to be able to move to that, uh, southerly tract which is neighboring. I can see a lot of justification for it. Um, it, it seems like there's not a lot of residential close by, which, uh, again, it's harder and harder to come by in a metropolitan area. Uh, that, those are my comments for now.
Huh, okay. Any additional comments? Brad, is that, is that a motion that you want to put those comments into a motion? Yeah, I think you're on mute. I think you're still on mute. There you go.
Hey, look at me. Third time's a charm. If you could read my lips, I was saying I'd like to move to send the case two zero zero three three MA to council with the recommendation of, of approval. And, and the basis being that the request rezone is compatible with adjacent land uses and the current, current development pattern for industrial development and uses in the area. And I, I do believe that there is a adequate need and justification for the uses that would be permitted, uh, with that zoning designation.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, then moving properly second that we sent case number twenty dash zero three three MA for the council recommendation of approval based upon the, uh, recommendation from Commission of Random Further discussion? If not, Chairman, pay a roll call vote.
Okay. Gilchrist?
Hi.
Cars?
Yes.
Yonkey?
Hi.
Carlo?
Hi.
Dennis?
Hi.
Grady?
Hi.
Uh, Taylor, not here, Branham?
Hi.
And Farsen, um, also not here. That passes seven zero.
And again, we are recommending body to kind of council. They will meet back. Uh, and they're meeting on the nineteenth of November and, uh, the public is welcome to weigh in at that, at that time. Thank you very much. I think that is, um, all the map amendments that we have today. And we can move right along to our next agenda item, agenda item, which is the presentation for the code rewrite. Is that right, Price?
You're correct.
Okay. And I think our consultants are here with us today. Is that, is that right?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome aboard. Welcome, welcome, welcome. We're excited to hear about what, where we are and, and what you guys have been up to and all that good stuff. So, um, thank you for the, the great work that you've been doing on, on, on this rewrite and, and more specifically, some of our new commissioners who uh, are now on the commission since we, uh, we undertook this, this endeavor. So this will be a great opportunity to get updated. So thank you guys for participating today for sure.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we, uh, we appreciate the opportunity to be here. And, um, it's good to see some familiar faces and, uh, be back with you again to talk about, uh, this, uh, this project. Uh, we, we're reaching an exciting point in the project and, um, and look forward to sharing with you the results of the testing, uh, phase. And to those of you who are new to the commission, uh, we look forward to talking with you, uh, and, um, uh, sharing those results as well. I have a presentation that I will share with you. Hopefully you can see that. Everybody see that? Great. Fantastic. Well, so my name is Tim Richards and I, uh, am a principal with Clarion Associates uh, based in Chapel Hill, North Carolina, and with me today is Jonathan Woker, who, uh, is with McBride Dale Clarion, um, and which is a sub consultant on this project and, um, and that firm, um, conducted most of the testing, um, that we'll talk about, um, with you this, this afternoon. Um, I wanted to start out with a, uh, just a brief introduction. And I've got about ten windows open, so bear with me while I find the one that will connect me to the PowerPoint. So we wanted to give you a quick update on the project status. Um, and then, and, and so I'll do that and then I'll turn it over to Jonathan. Jonathan will describe the testing process and then, uh, we'll walk through each of the testing sites with you. Um, and, uh, we will open it for discussion, um, uh, for commissioners to ask questions or, or make observations, uh, on each of the testing sites. And so, and then if there are more general questions or discussions, uh, a discussion, we, we will also, um, have time for that following the summary of each of the test sites. Um, so some of you have seen this graphic before, but it's slightly different, uh, in that we've completed the task three drafting land development code. And we spoke with you last time we were with you, uh, on the consolidated draft. Now we are at the tail end of task four, um, task four involved, um, taking that consolidated draft of land development code and, um, seeing how it would be applied in, uh, on actual sites within the county and four, four sites were selected for testing. Um, so we're at the point now where we drafted, um, the modules, uh, the different installments. Um, they've been knit together into a consolidated draft. We've now, uh, seen how that draft, um, would, would play out in kind of real life, or I guess hypothetical, um, um, development scenarios, um, in different sites in the county. So following this, uh, testing, um, stage, um, we'll move into the public hearing draft. And, uh, we've been working with staff very closely as they've been, uh, consolidating comments and, and receiving input and conducting outreach, um, to various stakeholder groups. Um, we've had, um, meetings with the, um, county, um, sorry, the county council, um, as well. And, um, so staff is continuing to, um, assemble, uh, input um, that we will then translate into, um, edits on the consolidated draft and produce a public hearing draft. The timeline for that is, um, uh, early December, when we expect to have a consolidated set of comments that we can then go in and begin editing the master, uh, document and produce the, uh, the public hearing draft. Uh, but we're happy today to share with you the results of the, um, of the testing, the task four, and I will turn it over to Jonathan to describe kind of what, what the objectives of that testing um, um, is and how, how they went about it. So Jonathan, do you want to take it from here?
Yeah, thank you, Tim, and good afternoon to everybody. Um, I'm Jonathan Woker. I'm a planner with the firm McBride Dale Clarion. Um, I'm in Cincinnati, Ohio, and we teamed with Clarion Associates on the, uh, land development code rewrite. Primarily to provide the role of code testing of the proposed land development code. Um, code testing is a tool to evaluate proposed zoning regulations and standards based on review of proposed regulations and then using real development sites as a form to evaluate the proposed regulations. Um, and so we'll, we'll go into the process a little bit more detailed and then present our four, uh, test cases here briefly, but, um, there are four main objectives to the code testing. Uh, first was to evaluate potential impact of the proposed new districts and regulations on recently approved development. And as you'll see, we worked with staff to identify, uh, four locations that would help us to evaluate specific proposed regulations of the land development code update. Um, second goal was to verify whether the proposed land development code achieves the rewrite of the project goals. You know, I think that's an assessment that we'll need to make with you as stakeholders and then with the, the staff, um, to do that. But we think the code testing has accomplished, uh, the intent to, to look at specific types of regulations that are proposed and to show what potential impacts this could have on development. Third, to determine whether adjustments might be needed. Again, that's an assessment that we need to do with you and with the staff, uh, based on the findings we come up with. And then fourth goal objective was to demonstrate how the proposed land development code could alter future development patterns. And I think as you'll see in some of the illustrations that we've prepared and the assessment of the four test cases, um, that, excuse me, we were able to do that. So let's talk about the methodology that we used. Um, there are seven basic tasks or steps that we followed. Uh, first was to determine the existing and proposed zoning of each test site. You may know that the zoning map is still underway, but we worked with, uh, county staff to determine what the anticipated proposed zoning of the four sites would be so that we could, you know, embark on this, uh, analysis. Then we worked to identify the land development code regulations that are applicable to each site. You know, obviously a residential site would have different standards than a, a commercial site. We then analyzed the proposed regulations for each site and, uh, prepared a detailed report of how the existing sites, you know, understanding the existing site, um, and then assessed how the plans for each site would comply or not comply with the applicable regulations. So for example, would setbacks need to be changed? How would the approved plan be impacted by changes in parking or landscaping regulations? And from that assessment, we then prepared, uh, the summary of the key development impacts, um, for each of the four sites that we looked at. And then lastly, we illustrated potential impacts of the proposed new land development regulations. And as I'm sure you're aware, there are multiple scenarios that could be applied. And so, you know, the illustrations that we use are one representation of how impacts could change a development pattern of proposed site. Um, so let's look at the, the four test sites. Um, these are the, the sites that we worked with, uh, the county staff to, to develop and, and they were able to provide uh, us with existing plans that had been approved for each of these. So the first site was Tiffany's Bakery, which is a multi-tenant commercial use on Two Notch Road. Second was a residential development Willow Win Place on Willow Win Road for a, a single family detached home. Uh, we also wanted to look at a multifamily development, so O'Neill Point was chosen. Uh, that's a three building development on O'Neill Court. And then the fourth site that was looked at is the Longtown Commons Lexington Medical Center. And as I described, uh, later, you know, we did a little bit different approach. This is a nine parcel development uh, that was approved for a commercial, um, combination of commercial outlets and a medical service building. So we use that fourth site in a little bit different way, which I'll describe to kind of look at a bigger picture of how a, a larger thirty-five acre site might develop under the proposed land development, um, regulations. Um, so, you know, let me pause there. I don't know that I've covered enough for you to have questions, but if you do on, on any of the methodology, let me pause there and, and let you ask those.
Yes, I would like to ask, ask the staff, um, so how did we come up with these, uh, four testing sites? What was the, what, what criteria did you use to determine these testing sites in the county?
Yeah, I'll start first and then I'll let, um, maybe Tommy or someone else respond. Um, we worked with staff and said, hey, we would like to look at a commercial site, a single family residential, a multifamily, and then kind of a mixed use opportunity, something that's larger that we could look at. And, and I think these four sites were chosen because they were different uses and they were relatively recent development. But if there's other comments that someone wants to jump in, I'll, I'll stop there.
No, that, that's correct. Uh, one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we were able to do is, is to actually have a set of civil plans to compare and a very recent set. So it most accurately reflects what we currently have in the land development code.
Thank you.
Yep. So Tim, let's go to the next slide and what I plan to do is, as I mentioned, we've got four sites. And at the beginning of each one, we want to cover some of the bigger ideas that were, uh, the, the concepts that we wanted to test. We basically want to provide a broader context for the land development update and we evaluated, use those to evaluate the code testing. Most of the regulations that were evaluating reflect recommendations from either Plan Richmond County or from the, uh, few, the code assessment report that was done at the beginning of the, uh, land development rewrite. Um, so for this first site, um, part of the recommendation was to, uh, ref- was reflected by Plan Richland County, which was to identify areas along principal arterial roads where suburban commercial corridors should transition over time to mixed use corridors. And so, um, that kind of lends to the next bullet, which is to realign and modernize the zoning districts. So the example that we're using is to, uh, demonstrate what the MU two, which is the mixed use corridor district would look like on a more traditional commercial corridor site. And also to modernize the development standards was a broad recommendation of the code assessment. And that includes, you know, looking at revisions to parking standards, to landscaping, to open space set aside. So those are some of the, uh, development standards that, uh, form the basic framework for, for what we're trying to assess. So let me talk about the, the Tiffany's Bakery site. Um, this property is at ninety-seven oh four Two Notch Road. That's an example of what I would call a typical small scale retail commercial establishment. Um, it's an eleven thousand square foot multi-tenant commercial use. Um, there's one larger use, the, the Tiffany's Bakery, and then two, uh, tenant spaces to the right of the plan, each about fifteen hundred square feet. Um, it's a one point seven acre parcel that has eighty-one parking spaces and is currently zoned a general commercial district. You can see on this plan, there's a right in, right out driveway, um, on, uh, Two Notch Road that's controlled by the state DOT, and there's also some cross connection access to the plan right, which would be to an adjacent property owner. So that gives us some of the basic context that we started with. Now let's look at some of the, the outcome of some of our testing. So the proposed, uh, district is the MU two corridor mixed use district. Um, one of the major changes is that that MU two district has a maximum building setback from the right of way. So the MU two would require a maximum setback of fifteen feet. So you can see on this plan, we've illustrated how that could look with the building being placed closer to the right of way. By doing that, that then places the parking behind the proposed buildings. Um, so that's a significant change to the development pattern that you would see, um, in, in this MU two district. Another change would be, um, a minimum building length at the build two line of fifty percent. So, uh, that's based on the, the lot frontage, the lot width. And so with that application of that requirement, the building would need to be longer than was previously approved. In this instance, we took a little bit of liberty here and, and, and we showed two buildings, um, to meet that standard. Um, and, and that's mo- mostly because we wanted to keep the existing curb cut where it was. There are, I will acknowledge there's other scenarios that could be drawn to, to do this differently, but, but we thought this demonstrated a potential impact. There are, I will acknowledge, there's other scenarios that could be drawn to do this differently, but but we thought this demonstrated a potential impact that the MU2 district would have. And I think the third, what I would call major impact, would be the requirement for fewer parking spaces and actually a cap on parking. So this development would have 26 fewer parking spaces than the previous plan. Well, Tim, why don't you flip to the previous slide just for for a second as I keep talking, just to review that? So, you know, this is the approved plan and you can see the parking, there were 81 parking spaces here. And then when you look at the proposed plan, we're illustrating, you know, fewer parking. There would be some other changes that, you know, are what I would say less significant, new requirements for sidewalks, slightly larger landscape islands, open space requirements, which typically could have been met by the previous plan. And one that's a little bit difficult to illustrate in a plan view is the requirement for a front door to be oriented to the street frontage. So when you pull the buildings close to the street and then you place the parking behind, you know, the front door needs to be oriented to the street, but that also necessitates typically a rear door access as well. So again, that's not easy to illustrate in a plan view, but is likely to have some impact on the the use and and the layout. So I know I threw a lot of information at you there. I'm going to pause here and see if there's questions or, Tim, if you want to follow up on anything I might not have highlighted.
Thanks, Jonathan. We were mostly interested in your reaction to to this. So please feel free to ask questions or provide us with observations.
I mean, I'll I'll chime in a little bit. I mean, I think that, you know, I come from sort of a perspective that I'd love to see, love to see places like Two Notch revised into something friendlier. I find what's interesting, so where I grew up, there was an old shopping center that was oriented like your new code shows it, that the buildings were close to the street, sidewalks out front, all the parking was in back. It's how it had been built in the 20s. When I go back home now, that's one of the changes is that they tore down the buildings of the street and rebuilt them in the back and put the parking out front. And I, you know, even though this is where I come from, a largely residential area, except for this commercial corridor, it's all houses around. So I think it's interesting. This is sort of a throwback to the old, although places that had the old have had to force them into the new. So I I mean, I guess I'm curious. I mean, I know that we want Two Notch to be a mixed-use corridor, but I don't see it being the least bit interested to a commercial developer that they would do something like this because they'd end up with double entrances, which I know can be very challenging. So I'm just, I mean, I'd just be curious to hear what you have to say about like the size of Two Notch. I mean, is it already beyond that which this would work in terms of its volume and existence?
Are you asking us?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I just, I mean, I, as much as this is what I would love to see in reality, I don't think that it has any feasible reality on on something like a Two Notch. To have no parking in the front, although I know you can't do like parallel parking on Two Notch. I just, I feel like Two Notch is too big. I mean, isn't it possible that we've already got roads that are just too big for this?
Well, the development pattern currently is certainly auto-oriented. And, you know, it's 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 different from the direction in Plan Richland County. You know, Plan Richland County applies this mixed-use corridor character area, you know, in in specific, on specific corridors. This was one where it was applied. It it would be a departure. I mean, and when you see the the work that Jonathan did, you can definitely see that it's a different, a different form. It would require, you know, some changes in architecture, you know, Jonathan mentioned having to having front doors at the front of the building and then also accessible to parking. So they would have some some challenges. The question is, you know, is this the the form of development that you want to see in this particular location? And we follow the direction of the comp plan when we when we developed these standards, drafted these standards and and so that that's the basis for this. Now, this site is interesting, as Jonathan mentioned, they wanted to keep the entrance the same location, you know, but, you know, in a different site, you could potentially have some, and probably on this side as well. I don't know, you could have some flexibility as far as being able to have one building versus the two buildings. It's a little bit awkward on this side, I think, the way it shows up. But I mean, so if if your question is, is this viable? You know, that's, I suppose that's a market question more than a zoning question. I mean, the zoning is attempting to accomplish a particular character and form of development that's laid out in Plan Richland County. So.
I mean, maybe some of what my question would be is that, okay, so this is a MU2 corridor mixed-use district with, you know, the buildings having to front. You know, and I I mean, how many other corridor designs do we have for commercial? Because, you know, I just think that that that, you know, for that corridor or that type of development plan, I think is a complete misfit. I think, you know, times where you like have to turn the building sideways and kind of get a piece of it near the road, but yet be realistic that everyone's going to be pulling off this major road to interface. I mean, almost the Cardinal over here on Forest Drive is like that, that it 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 didn't try to front on Forest Drive, but it definitely didn't just take all the buildings and stick them in the back with a giant sea of parking. So maybe that's just the question is how many other mixed-use corridor development patterns do we have?
Well, so this pattern could be different by a couple of things. The the percentage of building length could be altered, which would reduce the amount of building frontage you would have to have. Right? So that that's a mathematical issue, but you know, you could, instead of having 50% of the frontage length being building, you you could modify that number to be less than that, which would then potentially allow some parking on the side, you know. So so that's, that's one comment I would make, but but, you know, the maximum building setback is really the, in my opinion, the primary development patterns that's set.
Can I ask some questions? That comment?
Yeah, I just would highlight that you could potentially have some parking on the side as well. You know, this particular district allows parking on the side or the rear of the building. So, you know, within that constraint of the 50% of the lot width being occupied within this built-to zone by building, you you could potentially have side parking. Another thing you could explore is allowing some limited parking between the building and the street. You know, it's not exactly in line with the direction for for this area in Plan Richland County, but it's a you know, another configuration. So I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Commissioner Brennan.
Thank you. So just for fear of stating the obvious, one of the reasons for the minimum width is to screen the view of the cars from the road? Is that correct?
Which cars? The parked cars, you mean?
The parked cars, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's the 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 reason for it is to create a more walkable kind of Main Street feel. And this is the let me see. Back on this side, these are the graphics from Plan Richland County for this particular mixed-use corridor character area, where you can sort of see the buildings are are pulled forward towards the street. And you kind of have a more Main Street walkable kind of environment as opposed to, you know, a larger kind of parking lot with the building back behind it.
And then you would reduce the the cap on the number of parking spaces to encourage people arriving by somehow other than vehicle, by car, I guess?
Right. The so the reason for the cap is, you know, the I would say, so a couple of things. Number one, you know, the minimums have been evaluated, minimum parking standards have been evaluated. I would say for a number of uses have been lowered. At the same time, in this particular district, in the draft currently, there's a parking maximum, you know, whereas now you all have kind of this tiered, you know, impervious mitigation, mitigation for additional impervious area and then additional parking is impervious. This actually sets a hard cap. Now, I say hard cap, but you can submit an alternative parking plan where if you needed additional parking and you could show it, then then you could be granted the be allowed to have additional parking. But the idea is that these are intended to be more walkable areas and and not sort of dominated by by roads and parking lots.
Okay. Did you guys get a look at the topography of this particular lot as it relates to the road?
I'll defer to Jonathan.
No, I I we did not.
Coincidentally, and and the other commissioners can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure there's a pretty steep drop-off from the edge of Two Notch Road down and into this lot. And to think about the structure being 15 feet away from the street, it makes me think that maybe the road level would be above the door, maybe even up to the roof line. So it could be a weird look if it was that close. And there was that much drop-off.
Fair enough. And, you know, I do want to acknowledge that, you know, this was a planning level assessment. I mean, I stand behind the work we did, but at the same time, you know, we didn't engineer all of these and try and design stormwater and so on. So, you know,
So how does that?
Relevant.
If you were to see it, what what would likely the response be, the accommodation or the recommendation be to for a different zoning designation or maybe some sort of a variance for the setback or?
Go ahead, Tim.
Go ahead, Jonathan. That's an interesting situation. So, I mean, is this an issue for just this particular site or along the corridor generally?
Kind of along that corridor, right, fellow commissioners?
Yes. I mean, some parts of the corridor, but not all of them.
Right, right. Just that stretch of of lots on that side of the road.
Although I think that's partly a mapping issue, you know. And I think that that if that is an issue in these mixed-use corridor areas, then we would probably have to rethink, you know, adding in some flexibility. You know, where where there's are issues with the topography or the the difference between the street elevation and the site elevation. You know, I think, so short answer is, if that's an issue and there's still a priority to see a more walkable development in this area, then we have to have some sort of workable flexibility provisions that would that would allow people to work around the topography. So right now, the built-to zone is zero to 15 feet. And so that could be, that could be adjusted as well. Jonathan mentioned the building width could be adjusted. But then, you know, there's any number of flexibility provisions that could be added. You could look at the at the numbers and see if we think they're reasonable in these mixed-use corridor areas. Obviously, that's going to impact the the purpose behind these built-to zones, which is to create a pedestrian environment. Well, if there's a major change in topography between the street and the lot, then that definitely impacts the way we would approach it with zoning.
Yeah, but you guys are professionals. This is not like the first time this has ever happened. So I know you you all are familiar with scenarios such as that. So potentially for this reason, this this lot is in fact a good test case. Just we could further the conversation.
Okay.
That's kind of all I had, but yeah, really just piggybacking on what Commissioner Karn said earlier, that double entrances thing really creates limitations for small spaces, which again, we all, we all know is a fact and it's true. Thank you for your work on this. That's all I've got on this case.
I mean, I've been I've been looking at the proposed comp, you know, the land development code rewrite thing with the use districts, and I see that we still sort of have a general commercial that would allow you know, the classic, as we've seen it these days, parking lot at the street, all the buildings in the back. And so maybe we just need something that, I mean, I don't really see any, I just think about that Cardinal on Forest Drive. You know, and I see where you guys have in your thing like the photo of CVS, I think the one on Assembly where they were able to sit it right at the street, which is nice, and then have the parking on the side. I just think this idea that we're going to stick all the parking in the back, I don't think at this point we have many places in the county that that is going to work. So maybe just in the ones, you know, so we have general commercial I see that sort of allows what we currently have. And then these three neighborhood mixed use, I mean, maybe they just need more flexibility for not that much forced frontage and allowing more of turning things sideways.
What is that development? You mentioned Cardinal?
It's called the Cardinal. It's on Forest Drive. It was a teardown rebuild of an old school. And
City, city limits?
Huh?
Is that in city limits?
It's in a forest acres, actually.
Okay.
But I mean, it was just an interesting urban redevelopment that, I mean, the lot was very, had minimal frontage and it was very, very, very deep. So it naturally lent itself to something, but I mean, they turned everything sideways and the the buildings all pretty much front and internal circulation system. You know, allowing you to sort of gamble and maybe you get lucky and get a spot out front. And if not, you end up in the big lot and you hoof it. But it, you know, it's not like there's tons of pedestrian traffic on Forest Drive, but I think there's probably more than Two Notch. So that's just, I, you know, and I just, I I sort of marvel, like, you know, I grew up in this place called Chico Heights, Ohio, which is a pretty fabulously beautiful community. And the fact that they tore down what you guys are proposing and rebuilt what you guys are trying to avoid. And those shopping centers are unbelievably successful. I mean, they're also sort of the only places to shop because the land use is so restricted for commercial development, being that it's almost entirely a residential neighborhood. So I mean, I can't say I like Two Notch. But I just feel like there's maybe a hybrid in the middle that would have more feasibility.
I will say, as the guy who's kind of parachuting into this project, and I think that's why you brought me in, is to give a a different perspective, is that I think the application of mixed-use districts needs to be relatively surgical, that if you apply it as a blanket across corridors, then you're going to probably get a lot of pushback. But if you can, if you can focus it and put it in places that are are likely to have that concentration, and then you create the fabric and then it grows from there. That's easier said than done, but you know, that that would be one point I would make. And and your idea of a hybrid is interesting. Maybe there's an ability to create an MU1A or something that allows, you know, build two at 30 feet that allows one bay of parking in front, but you're starting to establish more of a of a street wall that you don't have with 85 feet from this from the street. So the intent again was to try and illustrate what the regulations look like based on what we're finding.
No, and I I really appreciate that. I just, I mean, looking at the pictograms and the proposed code rewrite, I think it's just that there's too much jump from the general commercial, which almost pretty much just allows the beautiful development we have now, sort of tongue-in-cheek. And the MU one through three all look beautiful, but I just feel like we need something that starts getting us there. That's not so, it's got to be this or that. It's just too, I think that the difference between GC and the MU's is too great.
Let's talk about the next site, which is a residential example. And again, here are some of the concepts that we were trying to look at, again, largely based on Plan Richland County and the code assessment. Plan Richmond County and the code assessment. Connectivity standards, which has to do with assessment of, of links and nodes and number of connections that a development might have. Open space set aside standards, conservation development option, which, which builds on the options that the county has and, and formalizes some of those. Agriculture compatibility standards, which is, is new and is proposed in, in, um, on this. And then elimination of some minimum sizes for residential districts. You know, those are some of the bigger ideas that we wanted to assess on a residential development. So this is the Willowwind Place site plan that was provided, some basic information. It's currently zoned RU rural district. It's 74 acres and is approved for 86 lots and three open space lots. The open space represents just about 10%, so it's about seven acres of the overall, 74 acres. Single family development. The RU, as you probably know, allows 120 foot lots, 30,000, 33,000 square foot minimums, which is about 1.3 dwelling units per acre. I will say that most of the lots in this development exceed the minimums. So, uh, again, I don't mean to quantify, you know, back, backpedal on all these, but you know, this is probably not a perfect example of maximizing the RU density. But it, it's a good example that does have some agricultural compatibility. So to the upper left and the upper right would have agricultural uses adjacent to the site. And, and also one last point, as you'll see on the next slide, there are some waterways through this, some, some wetlands and streams. And so here's a summary of our assessment. And actually, we've got two slides that we'll go through. This first slide, we assumed a zoning of R2 in the proposed LDC. And so that would have a hundred foot lot width and two dwelling units per acre. But the proposed residential districts do not have a minimum lot area. The requirement would be for a 25% minimum open space. So that would be 18.5 acres, which would be, you know, different than the seven acres that was previously included. We did, I did mention that the uses to the upper right and upper left of the plan are agricultural. And so in the proposed LDC, there would be a 100 foot buffer zone that would be required. You can have some improvements in there. You could have bike pads or you could have walking paths or detention areas. But it basically becomes a setback area. And we've illustrated the potential impact that that could have. And, and we've got about 2,700 feet of agricultural buffer, which translates to about 6.3 acres of the site that would be needed. We've colored in the buffer areas that would be required and, and I don't think that's a change in your plan. But we've, we've highlighted those in blue that represent the buffers. Couple of the lots look a little questionable on how they might develop under the approved, but there are some options for averaging a buffers and, and some other things. So, um, you know, that's, that's a possibility. A revised site layout was not feasible due to the complexity involved with a re-layout of the subdivision. But we did want to demonstrate how this could change. But the density, the open space and the agricultural buffers would definitely alter the development pattern. And let me go to the next slide and then we can flip back to, to others. So the other component we wanted to look at was an assessment of the conservation development option. And so the table we provided here kind of illustrates this in, in some way. So the RU district is about 1.3 dwelling units per acre. I noted before, we're assuming the 86 lots, the 1.3 could actually be slightly more than that. So we're not quite apples to apples here. The R2 district would be two dwellings per acre. So that's 148. If you use the conservation option, which is based on, you have to have a certain minimum size in the R2 and the other districts. This property would qualify for that. You would get a density increase. So instead of two dwellings per acre, it'd be 2.2. And as you can see in the table, that would allow, you know, about 14 additional lots. Looking at open space, comparing to the seven acres in the current plan, the straight R2 would have about 18 and a half acres. The conservation option would require 50%, which would be 37 acres. So that's substantially increased. And then lastly, the, the lot with in the conservation development option, there would not be a minimum. So that's, gives the flexibility to the developer to do some cluster development and, you know, provides that, that offset. So that, that's a pretty quick overview of our assessment. And, and I think I'll pause there and see what kind of questions you might have.
Yeah, I think I'm still unneeded. Just one quick question. In terms of the required open space percentage. So is there any, I mean, like if you have completely undevelopable land, like because it's a lake or wetlands. That's all, you're given credit for all that, yes?
Yes.
And then the idea of the eliminating the minimum lot areas, that, that's all in the name of providing flexibility to the developer?
That's correct. Yeah. You know, the, we were comfortable with that. If, if, if it maintained the, um, the minimum lot width. The idea being that it does give some flexibility, but if you keep the minimum lot width requirement, you're still able to maintain a certain character within the district. You know, in this case, the character would be a fairly low density. You know, residential development.
And, but even that goes away with the use of the conservation development.
That's correct. Yep. That goes away. Yeah.
I would just say personally, I, I really feel like in a lot of circumstances, that bigger buffers fit the character of a lot of our unincorporated areas. I, I think that would fit nicely. And I think this is where potentially we get into the differences between, you know, what a LDC would look like for a municipality versus a, in an urban area versus maybe a county LDC. For the open spaces that remain, are those owned then by the, probably an HOA or who owns that?
Yeah. And there's a, there's a, there are several options for the, for conservation subdivision or conservation development. It's called the conservation area. And there is, HOA is one option. I'm looking at the regulations right now. See what the other options are. Um, I believe you can also have a, a nonprofit who could, could own the, own the land. But HOA is also an option. I'm sorry, I'm looking up over my, at my screen up here, looking at the code right now.
Is there a government option?
Yeah, I believe there is. I don't know why I'm having a hard time finding it right now. Section 26. Yeah.
It's on, starts on page 370 of the PDF, section F. So for the options, you've got retention by property owner, transfer to a property owner or homeowners association, transfer to the county, or transfer to a third party environmental or civic organization. Those would be the five, four or five different options.
Yeah, I was looking in the conservation, but I believe it references the open space. Yeah. So that's right. So you have a number of options.
Have you got any feedback from the county at the prospect of them taking ownership to lots and lots of acres of land?
No, not so far. Would you have any thoughts on that?
Sounds like it'd cost money to, to manage it. Police it, if you will, to, to administer it. You know, you'll be hearing from HOAs saying, you know, they're dealing drugs in the patch of woods in the middle of the neighborhood or whatever. Just, just thinking about that. And question to the commission as well, I guess. I, I don't know, maybe I'm old school, but the idea of eliminating minimum lot areas just really, I'm not comfortable with that concept just yet. And maybe I just need to learn more.
Tell me, can you tell me what concerned you about it?
I, I just feel like the na, you know, the nature of the community, particularly the unincorporated areas. You know, peop, people like space. And I know that affordability issues might come into play as we continue to grow as a community, but, um, I, I just know from hearing from different community groups and being a part of some of these, you know, rezoning petitions and stuff like that. A lot of discussion comes down to minimum lot areas and, and what that's going to make that neighborhood feel like. So at least I feel like psychologically, that's, that would be a major adjustment to our citizens. To, to, to not have any sort of minimum lot area in place.
I mean, now there would still be ten, you know, maximum density. So, you know, oftentimes, but the minimum lot area in people's minds serves sort of as a proxy for density. You know, so. Yeah. Anyway, okay. Well, I appreciate that comment. Any other thoughts or comments or questions on the site?
Okay. So we, um, we looked at a, a third site. We do have a total of four, so we're a little more than halfway through here.
But I'm gonna back up real quick on this. Willowwind, do you have a map that shows what it could look like under proposed R2?
No, and we did not, because there would just be too many, too many scenarios and, um, you know, the layout of streets. And, and as Mr. Brandon pointed out, you know, we may have missed some topography on the other, but we, I, we just weren't able to do that level of analysis.
This would be creating a new subdivision. And you guys are not engineers.
But do flip back to the next slide, the last slide, Tim?
Yeah.
You know, I think what we were trying to do is demonstrate the areas that would be impacted. And, and again, there, there's another illustration in the overall report about the node and the, the link analysis. So, you know, you would, they would, would need to be, they would need to account for these agricultural buffers. You would have to have nearly twice the open space, which is shown in yellow. It's a little bit hard to see on here. And you would have, have to also have more connectivity in the streets. So fewer cul-de-sacs as well. And not that this has a lot, but you know, th, this pattern would change pretty substantially with the R2 and then even more so with the conservation district. So, um, yeah, I know it's five o'clock. I want to try and keep going for everybody and, and respect your time. The, the third site we looked at is a multifamily development. Um, and again, really being driven by the code assessment as well as, you know, the concepts of the Plan Richmond County, some of the concepts that were applicable here are multifamily standards. And I'll talk about those some, again, open space set aside, additional landscaping requirements and the MU two district, the site that was chosen also for this was an MU two district. So those were some of the bigger categories that we were trying to look at as we applied this to the O'Neill Point. So let's look at that site. So this is O'Neill Point, which you may be familiar with. It's a 612 O'Neill Court. The current zoning is R3, but it also is a general commercial and in part of an overlay district. So relatively complicated existing zoning from what I can tell. It's a 3.2 acre site with one driveway off of O'Neill Court. It's an irregularly shaped property and, and even on this plan, kind of down to the lower left corner. You know, there's a tail piece of the property that's, that's off the, the page here. So it's, it's kind of an irregularly shaped site. Three buildings were approved, 42 dwelling units. And so this is the existing development that we started with. And then looking at the assessment. So the proposed zoning was anticipated to be MU two corridor mixed use as well. This site actually didn't have a lot of drastic changes. So, you know, again, we kind of kept the driveway access location as a given condition. The main changes would be that building B, the, the two buildings on the upper right was, is a leasing building and a residential building would need to be pulled closer to O'Neill Court. So they need to shift about 15 feet towards the street. The other main impact is that the multifamily development standards include a maximum building length. So that maximum building length is 185 feet. The approved building, that's building A. So that's the, the building that's to the left and center of the slide. That building was 250 feet on the approved plan. So in order to comply with the maximum building length standards, we changed that to be two buildings. There would be some other changes to the parking. Some of the landscape islands needed to increase. And there would need to be some greater diversity of landscape materials. But, um, you know, this, this option actually is, is well landscaped and actually exceed landscaping requirements. I will say one other change that we noted. There are flood plains and some wetland areas to the plan right, I'm sorry, to plan left and top. And so we're illustrating the 50 foot buffer from that. That did impact the parking layout slightly and shifted building B a little bit. But I will acknowledge, and, and one of the home builders that was on a previous presentation pointed out his knowledge of this. It's likely that, that the average buffering, the buffer averaging, I should say, would allow the, the plan as approved. So sidewalk connections are also required. I will say one other thing that's not easy to illustrate. Again, in this MU two district, there would need to be a front door connection or orientation to the street. I, that may be on the existing plans. I did not have building elevations, but it is something we wanted to point out and do that. So all in all, the, the main change would have been shifting of the buildings and then accounting for building length. So I'll pause there and see if there are questions or items to discuss here.
The only other thing I would add really quickly, Jonathan, if I could, the multifamily form of design standards do have a number of standards that would apply to the way the building is designed, you know, so the building frontage. And, um, and those things we, we couldn't really test. So we're looking just at the site design here. But the building design would also be impacted. So.
All sets and, and design and so on, right? Any questions on this one? If not, we can move to the fourth site. I'm wearing you down. So the, the fourth and last site, we took a little bit different approach here. And, and you can see on the, the right side, the, the items we were testing, but, but really what we, we wanted to do was look at a, a larger property and, and kind of reassess instead of really digging into the number of parking spaces and landscape islands and building setbacks, take a more broad approach and say, what if we looked at a larger development? How would the proposed districts apply? Um, and what would the development pattern look like? So on the next slide here, Tim, we decided to look at the Longtown Commons Lexington Medical Center. So this is 3016 Longtown Commons Road. It's on the north side of Clemens Road between Longtown Parkway and Longtown Road. The, there are nine outlots on this property. And we decided again to look at, instead of the properties individually, what if this were to develop consolidated? You know, it's a, a total of about 35 acres, 34.6. And I've, I've got some data on the right side about the overall size. Right now, the outlots represent about 55,000 square feet of Commercial slash service development. And then the the medical office development is almost twenty four acres. It's a five story building with two hundred and almost two hundred and twenty one thousand square feet of medical. Urgent care, diagnostic and and office, medical office uses there. And so the what and and we assumed again the MU two, the mixed use corridor district. So let's look at the the last slide here. This illustrates what could happen and and this one again is is just one alternative. This could be designed in multiple ways, but what we wanted to illustrate was a pattern that showed. A larger campus style development that could be. What it would look like under the MU two. So the red boxes are generally a combination of primarily commercial, but with some. Restaurant or service uses. The purple magenta boxes in the middle, those would be primarily. Service uses with a mix of of office. And then the the pink boxes at the top of the plan are primarily office. We did assume some structured parking, a parking garage. And so we we also assumed a combination of one, two and four story buildings. So some of the red buildings along the front are are multi-story, but not all of them are. You we assume the primary entrance on Clemens stayed the same. Generally, the entrances on Longtown Road and Longtime Parkway also stayed the same. And we wanted to just illustrate that and and the outcome was basically that, you know, you could have substantially more density. You know, you could have potentially four hundred and eighty thousand square feet. Again, a combination of office, service, restaurant, retail compared to approximately three hundred, two hundred and seventy five thousand square feet. Of the existing development. And, you know, this could, you know, start to create a grid pattern, street system. We assumed private interior roads, but that could be public as well. And again, one of the comments that we heard from the builders group, and I think it was a good one, you know, they said, well, this assumes that one. One master developer creates all this. That's probably true, but not necessarily. You know, this could be carved into four or five. Pieces, larger chunks than you would get in the outlawed traditional outlawed development. But it could be developed in multiple stages or by multiple developments. If if desired. So again, we wanted to illustrate the an example of what this could look like more conceptually using the MU two district. Comments or feedback on that?
Yeah, I'll I'll go ahead and jump in if that's all right. First off, I think this is this is very well thought out and and I am absolutely a fan. I think, you know, when you start how does this get implemented? You know, I guess the question might be more of a question for staff. But what sort of interaction has there been with? F D O P with the Thomas system with with others, other county departments in terms of. Facilitating the the sort of development we're talking about. And I think this came out a lot in in the first set of comments on the first example. Of how do you make two notch road a place that people would actually want to walk on? To use in the way that this this zoning. Rewrite of the code would would encourage and and seek to to enable. What what what's been sort of the legwork on that end?
I think you just state that, you know, the other county departments, other state agencies are all included with our stakeholder groups. So, you know, as we've done the different versions of the draft, we've, you know, sent that information out. We're also looking to get some more comments and solicit for more comments. Not only from the public, but from our stakeholder groups in the next upcoming month. As we look to try to close out the consolidated draft and and get a a good draft out there in the beginning of twenty twenty one. For hopefully ultimately adoption. I have not received anything directly that I can recall in a long period of time from DOT regarding this. But that doesn't mean this is not something that we can follow up on and even prior to doing our stakeholder groups.
Okay, I appreciate that. We can we can really talk talk more later. Thank you.
So, Tim, if you want to go to the last slide, and these are the some of the conclusions and and. You know, we've talked through most of these. I think some of these are relatively obvious, but I think they're important to state. And that is that, you know, the MU two district is going to result in a different development pattern than a historical commercial corridor. You know, the the change in in maximum setback or the application of that is going to have. A change in development pattern. The open space set aside also will change the development pattern. And and my expectation would be that change would be more noticeable in the residential development than in the. Commercial and non residential developments, just because most of those could accomplish the open space set asides with. The open areas that they typically would have, but the residential would definitely have a different pattern. Number three, again, relatively obvious, but the conservation option does require a substantial amount of open space. And and you know, that trade off the density is something that needs to be calculated. And then number four, with our assessment of the agriculture compatibility regulation. You know, that buffer zone will impact those properties that happen to have that compatibility issue. And so that the application of a hundred foot buffer will change how a residential development is. Designed and and the feel of it. So those are our four main conclusions. And and as I mentioned, we did a more detailed report that I think will be made available soon if it's not already available. And I'll just thank you for the opportunity to participate in it. I I think Tim and his group have done a lot of hard work and and we're pleased to have been able to be part of it.
Well, Jonathan and Tim, this has been an awesome presentation by you guys. There is no question that a lot of hard work has gone into this plan and we're excited about what this will be. For Richland County, if you happened to be on our earlier conversation. When we were had a meeting earlier today. You may have heard that this is exactly the direction we are desperately need to go in in the county. And so thank you for your plan. Thank you commissioners for great questions about the plan. We certainly look forward to getting the more detailed information so that we can have an opportunity to review that. As as we move forward for sure. Any additional questions for these gentlemen?
Uh, when are we going to get to see the more detailed plan? I I like I like this. It's very informative, but I'm a detail oriented guy. I gotta see it all before I can really start commenting.
So I have some minor revisions that need to be done to the code testing. And that's about a it's about a fifty five page report, you know, there each site has a summary. And then there's then each site has about a ten page analysis. So I expect, you know, this time next week or sooner, we can get that over to Tim and then he can share that with with the county. And then, Tim, I'll let you comment on any of the next steps.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, no, thanks, Jonathan. Yeah, we do appreciate your time and and interest in in reviewing these testing sites. And definitely will get you the revised. Report that Jonathan, we've we provide to staff already. And so Jonathan has a couple of revisions. We should make that available to you within the next week, so.
And I got one other question real quick. When we're, I know you guys look at this from the county standpoint. However, you know, the county does run into city Columbia, city forest acres. How are are we all working together on this to make sure it's a fluid look? If, I mean, I don't want to stop right here at City of Columbia and then have something totally separate than what we have. I mean, are are we kind of looking at all that?
Yeah, yeah, we absolutely are. And, you know, the flip side of that comment is, well, we're we're not the city. And we've heard that in this process as well, you know, we've tried to take a balanced approach. You know, Clarion, my firm was also involved in the City of Columbia U D O project. That was recently adopted and and now they're working on the zoning map. And so we certainly looked to that development code. And some of the other jurisdictions in and around. Richland County as well as we drafted the development standards to try and align them where we thought it made the most sense.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Right. Any additional questions for Tim, Jonathan? Or the staff?
Thanks for your time.
Well, guys, thank you. Absolutely. No, this has been great. We have a couple of items on our agenda. The next item is to receive a briefing on the opportunity zones. But I wanted to to gauge the commission, you know, it's it's about twenty minutes after five. I know we've had a pretty long day today. I I'm I'm fine deferring that until our next meeting because one of the, I don't know if 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 the staff has that opportunity to. To share their, kind of their findings about what could potentially be done with this with these consultants. But if that has not occurred, it might make more sense to do that, just so that we can understand what they're saying about the interest. So that we can present that comprehensively to the commission in the next meeting. So if if everybody's okay with that, I can I can certainly defer that to our next meeting. Am I cool with that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I I'm fine. I I got till six o'clock before I got another meeting I gotta be at dealing with school board. So you keep rolling, I'll keep going.
Price, were you gonna make a comment about that?
Oh, well, no, I I'll let you decide if y'all are going to continue and then we can talk about it.
Okay, well, if if everybody's okay with that, Mr. Dennis, you know, we'll give you time to get to your school board issues. And then we can talk about this in in December. I'm I'm in a rush to get it, but I do. If 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 we're gonna defer it. And if we haven't had a conversation with these guys who will help to work on our plan, I would love to have that part of our conversation next time. All right, do we need to act emotionally or do to to do that to defer since we're changing agenda?
No, sir, I believe you can just, this will be something we'll just pick up at the next time since you weren't going to take any formal action on it. You can defer it.
Okay, and the only thing, Chairman's report, just thank you guys for what you would, you know, your 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 commitment during these Zoom calls. Been great to see all of you. I hate we can't see each other in person, but hopefully we'll be able to do that in the not too distant future, but we want to do it if we do it safely. So we certainly want to continue to remind everybody to continue to be vigilant about your safety and and stay committed to what we're doing. One of the things I mentioned to surprise. We have members, we're gonna have a new county council coming up here in at the beginning of the year. And I've had the opportunity to speak with several members. They're excited about the work that not only their staff is is doing, but also about what the commission is involved with. And and I think it'd be a great opportunity on the front end to to have the opportunity for them to meet us and us to meet them. And so that just tuck that away in the back of your mind because I think it's important, particularly as we embark upon this this rewrite and other planning ideas that you have. That it's important to make sure that that with this new council, we we try to create that type of relationship. Since they're all, they're the ones that appoint all of us, so. That's something that we'll talk about as we get closer to that time. Other than that, that's all I have on on Chairman's report today. Thank you guys for your attendance today. Let's see, anything else on on our agenda? Land Director's report?
No, sir, nothing to report other than what's in your agenda packet.
Okay, all right, that sounds like a plan to me. Anything else to bring to our attention today?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make one quick item for you all. I just wanted to introduce our new comprehensive planner with the county. His name's Matt Townsend. He's on the line with us right now.
Hi, you all. Happy to be here and I look forward to continuing to the future projects.
Mr. Townsend, well, welcome aboard. Welcome aboard. You join a great team and I'm really gonna take really good care of you. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. We look forward to meeting you so in person. Thank you. Anything else for the commission? Yeah, intend motions adjourned.
So moved.
All right, bye y'all.
See ya.
Everybody.
Hey, Brandon, can I call you? One second.
I think you missed him.
I missed him. All right, I'll call. Hey, Dennis, call me too.
You gonna answer?
I am. Of course I am.
All right, call it right now.